I spent a lot of time trying to get ready to explain what we've done in the special meetings of the Finance Committee meeting. But everybody that I'm talking to, except for the observer, Pat, was there in the Finance meeting, so it's not going to be an uphill battle. Very familiar with everything. What I thought I would like to do on the agenda today is start with the approval of the bills and the regular monthly financial statements, so that we'll have both those things done and out of the way. And then I was just going to take time to explain the special meetings and our revised spending plan. But again, all of us are very familiar with that, so that may be much easier than I had anticipated. And after the revised spending plan format and June 30th meeting minutes, then we'll go to the last special meeting we had and the tax levy motion that we passed. All those things go to the Board. Does anybody else have any item that we should talk about that needs to go to the Board that Great. Okay, so the first item would be the approval of our July bills. The routine bills, the amount of the July bills that we'll recommend to the Board for Does anybody have any question about any of the financial bills for July?
Well, Bob, I'd like to point out that we have included on the bills a continuation of our subscription to Hoopla for $926. This again comes out of the materials budget, which we have basically frozen at this point. But I do recommend paying this amount. It will get us well past the fall, I think, with Hoopla at this point.
So an additional $926.79? I'm sorry, my hearing is so bad. But once in a while Zoom is a little challenge. And that was for what, Paul?
That's for Hoopla. The digital service that we subscribe to.
Okay.
Audio and video.
Is there any question for Paul on that?
Well, also, there are bills for other materials, right, that are included on?
Yeah, these go back a ways. I mean, you know, it takes a while for these things to catch up with us. The recorded books bills were months ago.
So for the figure that we have, the 20,7913, it would be additional $900 and what, Paul?
$926.79. That's not in addition, that's already included in your table.
Oh, it's already in there? And you were just pointing it out?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I thought it was in addition to.
No, no.
All righty, that's easier.
So there is money, it's left in the budget, the entire budget hasn't been spent. There's a little bit left.
Little bit.
Are you comfortable using what remains toward this?
Yeah, I think it's a good thing. Again, I put in the Dropbox, I put a report on digital use. And as you can see in that report, digital use has gone up really overall about 21% over, or 27% over last year. But Hoopla's figures are really, really up there. Video was 124% increase, that kind of thing. So people appreciate the digital content that we have, they're using it, it's something we can provide, you know, when we're partially closed, partially open. So I think it's worthwhile at this point to continue with Hoopla.
Okay.
There looks to be about $6,000 to $7,000 that hasn't been spent in the budgeted amount through the end of June. So there is sufficient to cover that. But again, it won't leave very much for the remaining six months.
Yeah, not much left.
All right, and if there's consensus, we'll move on. I will be making a recommendation to the Board to approve the July spending at that level, 27,913.
Evelyn, did you have any comment on using some of the money that remains in the budget, materials budget, for these bills? I wonder whether she hears?
It may be frozen.
Oh.
Looks frozen.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't know what you do in that case.
I can try to keep in trouble.
I know you're concerned, but what is in that budget now? Yes, I have no problems.
Whoops, she disappeared totally.
That can be good.
Well, we can proceed because there'll be another opportunity, you know, another opportunity to discuss this in the Board meeting, right?
Yes. I would just say, Marie, if there's money left in that line in materials, overall, we're still in a deficit at the six-month mark, so it just should be considered. Okay, shall we move to a review of the financial statement? If we could. And I don't need to explain this, but for, I've had a discussion with Marie about the nomenclature of what we're doing. And if we could refer to the new spending plan as a 2020 spending plan, it would be easier than repeating the word budget, so we can leave our budget as it is and adopt a new plan as we will. So as I looked over the financials for the month, there is a concern that we're a little bit behind, but it's to be expected for the six months that we've had. And the total would be we're about $43,700 off of revenue and $21,000 off of expenses. So a total of about $25,650 off of the year-to-date on the budget that was passed, which I think is a fairly reasonable position to be in at this point. And we've all been looking at expenses and discussing expenses, so does anybody have any specific questions about the June financial statements?
Well, we seem to be a fair amount under the budget in the last month. So maybe $25,000 below what was budgeted for the current month?
On income.
No, on expenses. And below also in year-to-date. So that's good. And, you know, we were hoping to see a little savings, considering that the library hadn't been open to the public for a while.
Any other discussion or response? Do we want to vote on each thing, or do we just reach consensus and then we bring it to the Board as a motion? Marie, do you have the format?
Well, usually Evelyn chimes in, so I'm kind of waiting for her to clarify this. Don't we only approve the bills?
Okay.
Am I correct, Paul? And we just reviewed the financial statement. Evelyn's raising her hand. Evelyn, you're muted.
Last time I was actually talking and answering, and I guess you couldn't hear me. But on this, all we need to do as a Finance Committee is, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Is approve the bills and make the recommendation to the Board that the bills be approved.
Yes, okay.
Put it more formally. And some of the other pieces in your list, we already, as a committee, had voted on and made motions, so we wouldn't even need to repeat that now.
Okay. Then the other things, the other items that I had to report on were the special meeting of the Finance Committee, which we were all at and participated extensively, so how much discussion we have. But at the June 30th meeting, we adopted a spending plan that essentially targets $70,500 in savings. And I think we all worked very hard on it, and I'm pleased to bring it forward. I haven't heard anything in addition. I think we're targeting the right amount. And that, I think our plans will get us to the end of the year whole if things hold as we anticipate they will. Is there any other comment on the new spending plan? Or the June 30th meeting of the special meeting of the Finance Committee? It was a lot of hard work, but I'm very happy to be able to report, we got it done, it was very nice. So then moving on to our spending plan, since we all were a vital part of it and a part of the struggle with it, I don't know that there's anything more to be said in this meeting or any other question. Evelyn is sending something in chat. Hold on a second. Yes, Evelyn, when you seemed to be frozen at some point, and we did make a motion on accepting them and passed it, we were unable to communicate.
We didn't vote.
Okay. All right. Does somebody want to move the 27,913 approval of the July bills?
Bob, excuse me, but you actually make the motion, this Treasurer, then someone seconds that motion, and then we approve making the recommendation.
Yeah, I asked if someone wanted to make the motion, I didn't make the motion.
You make the motion.
I make the, okay, well, I have done that. I make the motion that we approve the July bills in the amount of $27,913.52 as distributed to us.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
And then you, I guess we all approve. Marie, do we all approve?
All right. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Thank you very much. All right. And then, so we talked about the 2020 spending plan that we'll be presenting to the trustees. And the last item I had to talk about was our July 7th meeting. And there we made the recommendation to keep the 2021 tax levy the same. I'm not going to report, Marie, on our discussions about the election. I think that would, you were saying in the meeting that it wasn't just germane to finance. Do you want me to present that as well? Those discussions, or Paul, do it in his report?
I think, is that on the agenda? There's an item on the agenda about the date of the election, so probably at that time in the Board.
Okay.
Meeting would be the appropriate place to discuss it.
Yeah, thank you. So you'll handle that as the time comes up on the agenda. And everyone was here for that discussion, and we all made the, we supported the motion with one abstention of leaving the tax levy the same as the 2020. Anything further we should discuss in the Finance meeting?
Yeah, Bob, I had a conversation with Andy this afternoon. The collection, it's still early on, I don't know if, didn't seem like they had some real hard facts, although they did say that so far it looks as if they have been at the 80% mark in terms of collection based on, you know, last year. In other words, you know, they've collected roughly 20% less, as I understand it, and I, I don't know, he's I wasn't sure we were always talking about the same statistics, but so, but he did mention that it's really early, there may have been problems, there's a lot of people who come in to pay in person, and those people weren't showing up. They may know a lot more by the end of the month than they do right now. He just wanted to give me some idea at this point. So it's a bit early to make any decisions based on it, but so far they are behind.
So he's 20% behind last year's collections at this time?
That's what it looks like. He talked about 18% to 20%.
Did he allude to or imply that that might mean for them a deeper cut than they had planned, because they were using 10% as well as us?
Well, I don't, I don't think they're making any final decisions yet on that. As he said, it's really kind of early to, you know, make those decisions based on the information that they have.
Do they have any hopes of any federal assistance at the local level?
That I don't know, we didn't really talk about that. One thing we talked about, though, is, you know, if the federal $600 payment runs out on unemployment, that is definitely going to impact tax collection. You know, it's supposed to run out at the end of the month, but the way it's been, the federal government tends to come through and continue with it. So if that happens, that's fine. If not, it should impact tax collection.
All right. I guess we may be back at the process that we just went through with some more rigor. And it's a little intimidating, but everything is so fluid in so many ways that we're just one more entity with some anxiety about going forward, because it's not so clear. I was pleased with our processes in June and July. That was good sharing and decision-making, so it will be harder if we have to dig deeper.
Well, he did assure me that they will keep us in the loop and pass on information as it becomes available.
All right, now, at the Board meeting, I know you said in your report that we may stay at three, I'll be interested in that, too. And I don't think we have to redundantly discuss it, we'll wait for the Board meeting to hear your report in depth. Is there anything else that we should deal with as a Finance meeting?
Was there something about the audit that?
Oh, yes, I forgot about that. I sent you an email, Paul. When we contracted with the auditor, we had targeted July, I wondered if you have any information about that, or any information about the solicitation we were going to put out for bids to be our next auditor. You have anything to report on?
We haven't sent the RFP out yet. Auditors are still, you know, kind of like everybody, have part of their people still working at home, and, you know, it's still not quite normal yet for them. So I haven't sent the RFP out yet.
Okay. And is the, do you have a sense of where he might be with our audit for 2019?
Joy, I don't know, where are they, do you think?
We have our files and information, there's just some things that, you know, sometimes they ask for, and I'm sure it's really crazy for them, too, right now. So I, you know, I haven't, I've given her everything that she, the files that she needed from me, so we just have to figure out a time to get together.
Okay.
I'll keep you posted.
All right. And Paul, maybe if needed, you could call him late in the month and see if he has any idea about completion. So we'll know when that might arrive. Second wave, asking the same question, right, and leave it just for Joy. Okay, are there any other issues for Finance?
Shall we take a break for five minutes?
Yes, let's do that. Propose an adjournment, make a motion to adjourn? There's no motion, I have to sit here, I'll make a motion and we adjourn. Anybody opposed to adjourning? Let's see, everybody in five minutes?
Okay, I'll pause the recording. Thank you, thank you. So the first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there any comment from the public? Hearing none. Moving on to the next item, Treasurer's report and approval of the expenditures. Bob?
We just completed the Finance meeting that began at 5:00. The most immediate issue for us is to approve our expenditures, which, expenditures for the month of June totaled $27,913.52. And not much discussion, it's routine processing of the bills. And I would make a motion to approve our June spending at that amount, $27,913.52.
Is there any discussion on the motion, particularly the new people who aren't familiar with what went on in the Finance Committee? Do you have any questions on the approval of the bills? Okay, slow roll. So Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Evelyn, how do you vote? Kirsten, how do you vote?
Aye.
Michelle, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Marie votes aye. So it passes unanimously. Is that it, Bob, or?
Well, I'm looking on the agenda, we'll be talking about our 2020 revised spending plan. The only other item that you might be interested in is the financial statement. But I just want to give you a general idea that we have been working very hard in special Finance meetings in order to reduce our expenditures by 10% for the remaining six months. And I'm reporting about that on the regular agenda, item two. It's taken us several meetings to do so. And it was not an easy process, but we're very happy to give you a report at that time. And we also, in our last special Finance meeting, had a discussion of what to ask of the tax rate. Do we change it, ask for more, ask for less? And we, as a group, decided to keep the tax levy at its present levy. And so that also will need to be voted upon, and I can report it on the regular agenda. That was all that I had to report from the special meetings, but a lot of work went into them, thank you. Any questions?
Okay, let's move on. The consent agenda, does anyone want to see an item removed from the consent agenda? All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Sorry, Marie?
Yes.
I sent Kirsten some comments, I don't know if he received them.
Yes, comments were received, and thank you, I think there's some good comments in there that merit reflection and additional discussion in upcoming meetings, but I don't think they necessarily affect the spirit of the minutes that were delivered.
Okay, I got a little ahead of myself.
I didn't have that one.
I'm sorry, Evelyn, you're not always coming across clearly.
I may have to go inside. I had made one comment to Kirsten about, well, I made three editorial comments, and I made one more substantive comment.
Would you like to see the Building Committee report removed from the consent agenda?
The wording that the Building Committee said there will be no other, and I'm trying to remember the wording here, I'll have to go find it.
Well, why don't we?
You know, yes, please. Because as it stands, if it's in our drop Because as it stands, if it's in our drop box and approved by consent, then...
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the building committee report removed?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the building committee report removed. As long as Evelyn goes inside, so we can actually hear her. Because you keep breaking up, Evelyn, I can't, you, we can't hear what you're saying.
Okay.
And is there a second?
Good work, any better.
Kirsten seconds, slow roll. Bob?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Evelyn, are you there?
I'm going inside.
Do you vote yes or no?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries.
I'm going to make another provision now for our acceptance of the consent agenda if our minutes would then reflect going forward. This is hopefully going to be better. Which actual items were as part of the consent agenda and which aren't? So if there's a piece that's not, let me get back on here so you can see, that the minutes reflect that instead of just taking it from the actual agenda. Sometimes, you know, the, not all reports are actually included in that month's drop box. Please tell me you can hear me.
Yes, you're coming. That's better. I'm not exactly sure what you're asking me to do.
We understand the words, but we don't understand what you mean.
Okay, um, so if we looked at the minutes, let's say there's administration, building, president's report, upper Hudson, and whatever else. As it, that's part of the agenda. The agenda stays stable each time because we don't know what's actually going to be in the drop box by that Tuesday. But on Tuesday, we know what's going to be there. Like, next month, there will probably not be an upper Hudson report. So I, I would suggest that the minutes for our August meeting reflect that there is, only mention the actual reports that we reviewed and consented to.
You're saying that if a report isn't present, that, that be indicated? Is that what you're saying?
By just not being listed in the minutes. That's all.
Okay, so for this, we'll take out the fundraising because we haven't had a fundraising one.
Right. So when the minutes say this was a consent agenda, it only lists the items that were actually part of that consent. I think it's just more accurate.
Michelle, are you?
Sure, whatever. And you can, and I know you're not usually one to be, what's the word I'm looking for? A shrinking vine, so if there, if there's something you want me to do differently, you can just email me and tell me to do it because it's not like, you know, it's not like I have an extensive history of taking meeting minutes.
No, thank you. I, I guess I have become, in my later years, not a shrinking vine.
I'm shocked.
I used to, I am much more reticent than, I, I used to be very quiet, believe it or not.
I don't.
Oh, it's true. It is so true.
Okay, so I'm moving, I'm moving the, the building committee piece out of the consent agenda and putting that back into our agenda, agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, okay. That motion passed, so we'll continue with the regular agenda. We need to establish a date for the annual election. There was some discussion of this within the finance committee. And a date was suggested, and I believe that was Tuesday, September 28th. Am I correct on that, Paul?
29th.
29th?
Yes.
That avoids a number of holidays, religious holidays in the month. And also gives us a little bit more time. So would anyone like to move on this topic? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we set the date for the election on September 29th, Tuesday.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Slow roll call. So Bob?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Aye.
Kirsten?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the motion carries. A little bit more discussion around this. For one thing, you'll find later, because we are not, if the board goes along with not increasing the levy, the tax levy, this year, then the budget won't be on the election. Only the candidates, there are two seats, two board seats, that will be open for election this year. So if everybody can recruit candidates for those positions, that help is greatly appreciated and seen as an appropriate role for board members. Also regarding this, there was some discussion with the League of Women Voters and whether, under the circumstances, they would be comfortable holding the election, as they've done in the past. Paul contacted them. And I also spoke with, with some of the members. And they indicated that it could well depend on the format. So what we proposed doing is to have a meeting with some of the representatives selected by, by them as to what they might suggest in the way of how the format should be different than other years under the circumstances. One suggestion has been to use the absentee ballots more than has been done in the past. Anybody have anything to add to that? Paul?
No, I think at this point, I will want to talk to the Board of Elections also about their recommendation. You know, I know that some of the school districts had absentee ballots only. The thing about absentee ballots is, in the past, you know, you had a long list of reasons why you were requesting an absentee ballot. And we, we need to change that to include, you know, the idea that you don't want to go into a public building. You know, if we, if we hold the election in person. I did suggest to, I talked to Margaret Story, who's usually in charge of this process. And I said it's, particularly at the main library, we would probably want to change the venue to stairs where there's a lot more room. The office where we normally hold it is really too cramped. You can't practice social distancing that way. So we definitely would want to move the, the place that we hold it at the main library. But again, I think, I don't know, you know, the Board of Elections may be recommending completely doing the elections through absentee ballots at this point.
Which would be a challenge for, for us because of the cost involved and, and at a time when we're trying to save money, not being uncertain as to our revenues. Evelyn?
Well, if I can remember three things. One, have you heard anything from Nyla or from Tim about whether or not, I know Nyla was pushing the governor's office to make some decisions about these elections, like library elections. Have you heard anything else about any executive orders or any other restrictions, recommendations? Nothing? Okay.
Nothing, no.
Two, I will just, you know, again, just playing devil's advocate here. If it gets moved upstairs, will those who cannot walk up the staircase feel uncomfortable being in the elevator, you know, touching buttons, et cetera? Just something to think about. And three, the suggestion was made that the, at least the application for the ballot be put on our website. So we may not need to send it to every registered voter. Just make sure people know that the application for the ballot is on the website. Then people can take, get that, send it in, and then get a ballot in return. That might still be more costly than it's been in the past, but it might not be as usually costly if we have to, if we, versus sending it out to every, every registered voter.
Some other issues are, last year, there, there were delays in verifying that an individual was eligible to vote. So we need to be cognizant of that. People will be even less understanding about spending a lot of time waiting to vote than they were last year. So we need to, need to consider that. Any, any comments or Kirsten?
You mentioned that the budget, proposals to maintain the budget from last year, and therefore that would not appear on the ballot for this year, this coming year. Is that the case all years? Is that, is there a certain number of years one can continue that? Or does it have to be voted, does the budget have to be voted every period, some period of time? Or if you just maintain the existing budget, does it never have to go back onto the ballot?
The budget only goes before the voters if you're looking for a decrease or an increase. Doesn't go, it's actually not the budget that goes before the voters. What goes before the voters is the tax levy. And again, unless, unless you decrease or increase that, it doesn't go to, you know, before the voters.
Okay, thank you.
But...
Evelyn?
Of course, if we do, if we do that continually, we fall further and further behind rising costs. So, you know, it's a good theoretical possibility, but in actuality, it could really be detrimental. And as I am actually concerned about keeping it where it is now, but...
Well, you'll have an opportunity to, to voice that later on in the meeting when we get to the proposed budget. Anything else before we proceed? Okay. The next item is the revised 2020 spending plan. The idea is to reduce the expenses going forward for the second half of the year by 10% of what had originally been planned. And Paul has come up with a, a plan for that. Has everybody seen that? Does, do, does anyone have questions on it or concerns? Apparently not. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the revised spending plan? Bob has...
I would make the motion to...
Is there, is there a second? I'll second it. Hearing no others. Any, any discussion on the motion?
We...
Evelyn?
We are still at least going in with the philosophy that as long as we are reducing by 10%, that if there's some room in one line versus another, that there'll be some flexibility. I believe that was the thought that was commented on, addressed. But it's nice to have that repeated and agreed to.
Kirsten?
Question. Is this 10% reduction, a 10% over six months? Or is it, is it a 10% reduction of our expenses for six months? Or is it a 10% reduction for the yearly budget that's being rolled out over six months?
I believe that it's $70,000 and $70,500 total. So the city was our model. We had a conference with them, and they were suggesting that a 10% reduction, and there was a 10% reduction for the last six months. So that would actually be a 5% reduction off the annual.
Okay.
So then we, we had broad discussions about how do we get to that? And we came up with a, Paul came up with a plan, and it was essentially accepted as is. And the key in the discussion was personnel. And we made a value judgment, or in my opinion, it's a value judgment towards the end of our deliberation to not go forward with materials purchase, which is a fundamental function of the library, with the hope that we could, that this would be a temporary measure. And, and we go forward. It's rather urgent that we reduce to 10%. And we felt this plan, we have confidence that we can do it. And we'll continue to look at the issues of finance. It's possible that the tax collections will further impact us, and we may be back at the same process we've just done. But that's where we are.
The reduction was not just in light of the tax revenues, but also applying the same rule of thumb, anticipating a 10% reduction of the revenues that are in our budget for the six months going forward. So it wasn't limited to just, just tax revenues.
Yes, it was a revenue reduction of 10%.
Any other questions?
That other, the comment, the question I asked, maybe it's my being obtuse, but I didn't feel like there's an answer or, you know, any reaction to that.
Can you repeat your question, Evelyn?
Sure, that as long as, in the end, we are reducing by 10%. Unless it's a thing that we need to reduce even more within these six months. reduce even more within these six months. So I'm leaving that aside. But as long as we are reducing by 10% overall, if different lines are showing, could there be flexibility if one line is reduced more than we expected and that we could use that money in another one of those lines, I'll call them lines. For example, we talked about the fact that the security line was even, there was even more savings up to this point than was noted in the sheet. Therefore, if we moved a few dollars, you know, theoretically from there, it could go back into, say, materials. It's just giving us some flexibility to go forward so we're not to be rigid in saying, well, this was the line and this is the line, and that's it. There was.
I wonder if I could like to respond to that.
Sure, please.
Our plan was a dollar plan for $70,500. And in our discussions, as I understood it, that target was why we developed this specific plan. The items in the specific plan, in an aggregate, have to meet that amount. If there's some other way or financial results that impact that and we're closer to it, we could alter it. The objective of this whole process was to reach and identify $70,500. So it's my interpretation, we didn't discuss it broadly, but that was our target. If we hit the target and materials, we can restore more spending to materials because there's less spending. Otherwise, we certainly would like to do that. So there is a level of flexibility and discretion, providing we're hitting our target and our target doesn't increase.
Thank you, Bob. I, I just wanted, I wanted to bring it up during the meeting of the entire board and understand that there is that consensus that that's how we would go forward. But thank you.
One of the reasons that so much of the, the materials budget was selected to be part of the reduction is because we thought that it offered flexibility, more so than reducing in other areas, that if we find that our revenue reduction, reduction isn't as great as the 10%, we can still use that money and put it, put more into materials. Whereas if we were to look to some other areas such as staff, there isn't that flexibility. And there was no good way to come to the 10%. Whether you reduce materials or you reduce staff or you reduce whatever, we're primarily service. And it has, you know, it will result in a service reduction. But the Finance Committee did feel that this was the best way to approach it. Evelyn?
I, I should have been very, very, even more specific. I was talking about only those items on the list of reductions. I, I was certainly not in any way implying that we look elsewhere, like staff. I think the whole point of what we did was to make sure we didn't have to do that. But no, I'm just talking about those specific line items that were on the reduction list. That's it.
Any more discussion? Arlene?
No, I think it, I think it sounds good, and I think it's a hard thing to do and it looks like a great solution to a problem.
So hearing no more discussion?
Can I ask a quick question? For the, um, sorry, I'm toggling between screens here. For the, in the grid, for the saving salary and benefits, what for the, where does the $10,000 come from for the, the savings for that field of the savings column?
There was a resignation.
Okay.
That occurred by a longtime staff member. I don't know.
Okay. All right. I was just wondering, because it was, you know, not budget or, I didn't see it, it was the only one that didn't have the other two columns filled out, so I was just curious.
I think to answer that question, staffing is, is budgeted fairly exactly. It, it doesn't, it doesn't really account for what we call frictional savings throughout the year. And those can vary depending on if staff members leave, if there's a, if there's a vacancy for a period of time. You know, that, that kind of thing can, can cause frictional savings. What I'm estimating right now is we should have frictional savings of about $10,000 in the salary budget.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, slow roll. Bob, how do you vote?
Yay.
Evelyn, how do you vote?
Aye.
Kirsten, how do you vote? Michelle, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Arlene, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Who seconded the motion? Was that you? Did, or did Marie?
I did.
Okay. Okay, there was, there was a time lapse, and I sort of got caught up and forgot who said it.
Okay. The next item is a review of the 2021 budget. Did you want to discuss that, Paul?
Yes. What I put together is a budget that does not increase the tax levy. So a number of, a number of numbers will be fairly similar to 2020. Now, on the budget that I, you have a comparison of 2020 and 2021. The big differences really that show up, two things really. I did reduce the book budget fairly substantially for 2021. But also, I anticipated a increase in staff salaries of one and a half percent. Now, if we following, if we're following our regular salary schedule, that comes out to about 3%. So what I'm offering here is a salary increase of one and a half percent for 2021. That's kind of the only changes. It's only, you know, it's a little difficult sometimes to do a budget, you know, six months before the end of the year because you don't have final years. Slight increase in utilities because I still think it's slightly underbudgeted. But there's only really minor adjustments throughout the rest of the budget.
So Paul, I believe when I looked at the Excel spreadsheet, I think this was an Excel spreadsheet, that it didn't add up to this, to the revenues? Am I wrong about that? Sometimes I get things confused as I flip around.
Okay, the, the revenue and expenditures, you mean?
Right. The, the, it came to, to less, the expenditures came to less than, than the revenue?
Not, not in my budget. No, that, they balance in mine. I, I don't know. But in an earlier version, that was true. But the one I put in the Dropbox.
The revenues are listed for 2021 as being $1,354, $1,354,403. And the expenses are listed as $86,100.
How can this? $86,100 was just the library book budget.
Yeah. Then there's the whole facility below it.
If you keep going, the, they're still listed as $1,354,403.
And that number is the same if you go all the way to the bottom. Yes.
It's the same as the revenues?
1354403.
It's off a little bit.
1354403. Yes, hopefully that is the same.
I just added it up, comes up the same to me.
Okay, if you look at the, the revenue total from the, from 2020, it's 1,600, 1,363,903 versus the 1,354,403.
Two different years. Great.
Different years.
Right, but aren't, isn't the, oh, so you're projecting, okay. So we're, because you're. So you're projecting the same tax levy, but different revenues in other areas.
Right. Tax levy is 1,174,03.
Okay, I see that now. Thank you. I guess I didn't look at it long enough to determine that. The other question I had was, you're still budgeting only $10,000 for the difference between the expected tax revenues and?
Oh, right.
Does that seem realistic considering what we're going through?
We could. I guess I'm waiting for a lot more information on that, but I didn't second guess it yet.
And we may have more information by the time we take a vote.
Yeah, we, we don't need to vote on the budget until the August meeting, so yes, I may have more information at that point.
We wanted to present it now so people could, could ask questions and think about it before it comes up for a vote in August. Any more questions on the proposed 2021 budget?
Just the, the salary increase of one and a half percent, is that, Paul, what's your, how will, will that detract from our being able to retain people, do you think? Or should we try to find a way to make it more than that?
Well, it is a compromise. As we said, our salary schedule is, you know, the board-approved salary schedule runs around 3%, which is, I expect what people would normally anticipate, since this is not normal times. I think, you know, keeping the tax levy the same is tough to do because our expenses go up. So we're going to be doing less next year if we.
And was the thought behind keeping the tax levy the same, that people will just be having a difficult time this year, and you don't want to increase the percent of the levy? Is that the, is that the only reason?
Well, yeah, that would be the primary reason. You know, these are tough times and tough financially for people. It's a recognition that, you know, the library is holding the line.
I think my, my, and this is just a purely opinion, but just based on, you know, kind of what's happening in everywhere right now. I think that it's, you know, it's the, as Paul's talking about the compromise, I think it's, I think it's not going to impact, impact retention as much as it would i- in other circumstances, because it's, this is, this pandemic is impacting businesses all over the place. It's not like, you know, um, you know, it, it's not like it's, it's just the library and everything else is booming. It's like, it, it's kind of a, you know, it's everywhere. So I think that it's, I think it's a compromise, but.
Compromise, but.
You know, as, as a state worker, I know that my contract was being negotiated this year, and I know for a fact that we're not going to get any kind of, not going to happen. And we'll be lucky if we don't see furloughs. So I think it's, it's, it's an unfortunate reality for, for all of us.
Any other, other discussion on this? Arlene, did you?
I guess I just always, you know, the dollar amount of the levy is so relatively small that if everything else in the budget stayed the same, but we tried to make it a 2% salary, you know, salary increase, it seems like the tax levy would only need to go up a fraction of a percent, I think. I don't know if that's true or not, but. I guess I don't really have anything coherent to say about it, other than I, as I'm sure all of us wish that the salaries could go up. And I wondered if, you know, if you asked for an increase of a half of a percent in the tax levy, would that give you even close to enough to try to do that or not? That even the answerable question at the moment?
If I see this right, I think it looks like the salary is about half of the expenses total.
Well, the, the salaries and such are usually, in the past budget ran about 70% of the budget.
So.
In 2020.
If you make an increase of.
Yeah.
Percent, and it makes a quarter or percent increase in the total levy, I think.
I guess this, if I may. You know, my, I'll just reiterate my concern that I said at the Finance Committee meeting and here again, I just have that concern that we keep setting ourselves back. And I understand the thought process, I really do, that it is difficult out there, that people are very sensitive to any additional costs, that people are having such a hard time, and that, you know, they're reacting in ways that we might not want to see, you know, how they're going to react to this. But I do have that concern that we keep putting the library, its staff, its, its mission behind each time. And that was my concern, is my concern, and probably will be my concern.
I think, you know, since I really don't have anything to do by next, by the August meeting, you know, I, the question, I guess in my mind is either no tax increase or comply with the 2%. is either no tax increase or comply with the 2% tax increase. Now, the 2% tax increase is not always 2%. Comes out differently, the State Controller's Office gives us the figure. Could be 2, 1.8, could be any number of things. But I could, you know, put together a budget with that increase, and that'll have to go on the ballot. And you can take a look at, you know, what that does.
What's the percentage tax levy now? What 10 is it?
What 10?
2. something? What is the tax levy now percentage-wise?
About 5%, isn't it, Paul?
Was it that high? I thought it was 2.4 something.
I don't, I don't think so.
I have my tax bill here somewhere, I could go get it.
It may be a little less than, than 5%.
Yeah, I wish, I wish I had something coherent. I have always been a proponent of wanting to increase the tax levy a bit, just because in real dollar numbers, it's, it's not very much at all. And.
Well, it's not.
So if it's not.
In our case, if we had a 2% tax increase, it's, for the average taxpayer, it's not much, a couple of bucks, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the way it comes out. That, the question is not the fact that it's a couple of bucks. The question is whether it's an increase or not increased. And you could almost say, you know, that you could go for even higher, because, you know, once you say you want an increase, well, that's an increase. And that's, that's the way I, I think taxpayers react.
Doesn't matter if it's 1% or 2%.
Yeah, I mean, they, they don't really count that. We do advertise, for example, that, you know, our tax increases have been so small that, you know, basically it's a cup of coffee, you know. But, I don't know, in this environment, I'm just saying, you know, is it a good idea for any increase?
I mean, I think it is, in terms of what to present to the community, I think it's a, I think it's a very nice gesture for the library to say, given what's going on, we are not requesting a tax increase. I'm just wondering whether that's realistic in terms of the library's needs and our situation. And, you know, you've got a, you've got a whole year budget where things, expenses and income are about the same as last year. I just always land on the side of requesting tax increases, but, but I know that you with more experience, many of you with more experience, don't feel the same way, so I, I take that into large consideration, but.
I, I just, I want to add, and I usually add this. I never do a budget that reflects what we need. What we need is $3 million.
Yeah.
Serving this particular population. We're not even close to that, nor do we have the ability to do that. So we're talking nickels and dimes, as usual. And, you know, I think our choice here is, you know, either go with a no tax levy increase, or to go with a budget that stays within the 2% tax gap. Certainly not a year to go for 6, 7, 8%.
No.
So like I said, I could, I could give you that budget, and you could take a look at it and make that decision in August.
And Arlene, I think your concern is my concern too. It's why I abstain from no increase. But again, the thought was that trying to do this at this point, and that was the thought that prevailed, was that it would be, it would not be a good thing for the library to do it at this time. But I guess I've seen that attitude, you know, from previous years, and the results were, are not good in the long run. It's like a go-in situation.
Yeah.
Well, in previous years, though, we did raise that.
I'm talking, not this.
Certainly the last couple of years, we did.
Yes.
And we got a good reception.
I know. I'm talking back when, you know, in fact, when this went up as a special district library, and the, there were some issues with the budget even being on the ballot, but that's a whole other story. But there was the thought that if, if, if people were going to vote tax district library, then they had to come up with a very small budget. And I think in some ways, we're still paying for that. And I worry about it, I just absolutely worry about it. And I worry about what this will do to, again, the mission, to staff, and to what the library is. But, you know, my thought had been that if we go for an increase and it gets voted down, we're, no, we're soft. But the response was, it would be almost like a, it would be bad, bad marketing for the library to have done that. So I don't know, that's not my specialty. Sometimes you just have to go for it, and I don't know enough what human nature is going to be like in this, in this time.
It's helpful to know that 2% of our current tax levy is $23,500, which is still not enough to meet the needs of the salary schedule.
Kirsten, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I just, I think there was a Troy, a school budget vote in June. That was a 1.99% increase that passed. I think in the capital region in general, most schools had a slight increase that was underneath the tax cap, most of them passed. Rensselaer did not pass, but they had almost a 20% increase in their budget. So I wasn't surprised that theirs went down. But I think in June at least, people recognized, you know, these are hard times, but they felt they could support the increase, a modest increase at that time. I'm not sure if the mood has changed that much since June. And then, but time get to August, you know, we've added another. It may be worth looking at a slight increase, and I think, Paul, you pointed out the 2% was sort of the upper limit for what we could do easily. I think it would at least be worth looking at and considering. Do we have, when do we have to make this decision final, final, final?
You should approve the budget in August. I mean, we have to do ballots and all that.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, so, yeah, you should approve a budget in August. And as I say, you know, if you want to see what we would do with that 2%, I could, you know, have another budget then, and you got both of them in front of you.
I, I am for doing that. I think that even though it's only $43,000, it's $43,000 more than you have this year, right?
No, $23,000, right?
Yeah, $23,500.
I thought you said.
Oh, just $23,500.
23, yeah.
Okay. Well. You know. I think there's a good chance of the library will be, the, don't you think there's a good chance that the library will be even more valuable in many ways to people?
Well, I think right now it already is.
Yeah. I think so too.
According to what I'm seeing in our statistics out there.
Yeah, I think so too. I, I just think, it's almost like we want to make a statement. If we don't do a tax levy request increase, it's almost like we're saying we don't believe in it enough, that it's a, you know, that it's important enough even in this time, you know? And I, I think the library is especially important now, and I think that we should make that statement, sort of. I, I think it'll be well-received, but.
So we'll postpone voting on the, the tax levy until, until the August meeting, but we will have to vote then. Maybe in the meantime, people can sort of listen. Bob?
Yeah, I just want to say, I can't speak for Mark, but in the discussion that we had, there were some very serious reservations about asking for an increase because of potential backlash. I think that there's a tremendous amount of insecurity and fear in Troy these days, and the civil discourse in public arenas is very thin. You know, we have a talk radio in Troy that is forever finding things to criticize and very normal things. And we were afraid that it would be poorly received and invited backlash. So it's a very, very hard thing to, to really know, but the potential of backlash against the library could happen. And if it did, it would be very unfortunate. And you hear people saying, hey, yes, and all kinds of things, it's just, you know, there are other votes going on that are not in the academic arena, but it's sort of amazing how harsh the dialogue becomes, and how strident, and sometimes containing aggression, that, that things are. There's a demonstration going on, began at 7 o'clock over at the county over an issue. So it's just, it's a, it's a very, I think it's delicate. If we, if we don't make the right decision, it could be hard for everybody, that's all. Thank you.
I guess my feeling is, is that we should, we should decide what we think is really right to do for the library? Like what is, what is really, what, what is the right thing for us to do? And then as long as we really believe that, if there is a backlash, then we can address it, you know, we can, we can respond to it and talk about our reasons for wanting to do it, and the importance of the library. And if there's that big of a backlash to the tax increase, we should know if the library is seen as that, you know, negative, that people wouldn't want to support it. But I don't know, I agree with you, it's, I think it's, I think it's a hard decision, but I think our decision should be based on what we think is best for the library, not what we anticipate people's reaction is going to be.
You could be right. I think you pointed out too, an important role of the board, the board, you know, as advocates of library service in the community.
Right.
Okay, so we will discuss this again and vote at the next meeting. And hopefully during that time, we'll have more information about whether people are paying their taxes or not, since the deadline is the 31st. Okay. Any more comments before we move on? The next item is the review of the safety plan.
Yeah, we have been discussing this, so it's basically still in discussion stage. Right now, we have a revision of the plan that works on improving communications. It's one of the concerns that the staff has, as well as, you know, tightening up what, what are our procedures while the staff member does have coronavirus? So we've, we've got a revision going, and everybody is pretty much on board with it. So I will need to set up a meeting with Evelyn. Evelyn, you're the board's representative on that safety plan deal. And we'll go from there.
Any, any comments or questions? You had, you had mentioned that the staff had some concerns, Paul, I think in your report, and I was just curious what they were.
Basically about communications.
Communications among whom?
Yeah, I mean, we have, as you know, we have a health survey that each staff member takes. There have been a couple of cases where a staff member has had to go get tested. So far, all tests have been negative, but the staff is concerned that they would like more communication when those issues occur.
And what about from the public? Has the public expressed any concerns, safety, about the safety of using the library?
No, but we also have some revisions on that in terms of if, if somebody does, the staff member does test positive, how do we inform the public? So communications has been a large part of the revisions so far.
I don't think I've looked recently, but there was some concern the last time that there weren't specifics on how to deal with somebody who refused to wear a mask, or has that been improved?
We haven't really changed that, although we haven't really run directly into the problem.
I'm, I'm kind of surprised, because you hear so much about retail encountering problems with people.
Yeah, no, you do. There was also a large email just five minutes before I started intervening here from Tim, which, and is a long procedure that the lawyers have come up with for people who are unable to wear a mask. I'm not sure at this point, it's a really an eight-point, you know, process. I don't anticipate putting that in the safety plan, but masks are required for entrance, and so far, people have been cooperating.
I know, and Evelyn can probably add to this, that the, the sessions I've been, had been, have emphasized having a safety plan and following it, that being very important as far as, as countering complaints.
Making it available, so people know what it is. Revising it and adapting it to, you know, environmental changes to.
And thank you, Evelyn, for stepping up to work on this.
My pleasure.
Anything else on this topic? Director's report is next.
Yes, sorry about the lateness of the report. And also, maybe it's shorter than usual, but I have been busy. We were able to open. We were able to open Lancenburg today on a very limited schedule. They'll be open Tuesdays and Thursdays, two to six, and then Saturdays, ten to two. So basically 12 hours a week. Again, everything, they go follow the safety plans and everything, basically the same as Maine. The only difference is we were, due to the fact that there's not a lot of staff, we, we decided not to advertise curb service right now in Lancenburg because it has been difficult to, to have people come into building for service and also still offer curb service at Maine. But the reopening at Maine has been going relatively smoothly. As I say, we do need to make some changes on our safety plan. I I have some results back on the hazardous materials study in preparation for the masonry work on the north and east wall. The results are fairly disappointing at this point. As it turns out, there's asbestos and lead, both asbestos and lead in the paint on the north wall and on the east wall. At this point, it's recommended that we engage a company to do a design for abatement, and the abatement would be handled essentially by the contractor's committee and the old jobs. I still, I, I'm not sure. I'm not sure of this whole thing. I'm not sure if this is, you know, this derails the whole project. It's removing that much paint with lead and asbestos is just enormous at this point. I keep thinking if there's a way around that, whether the project can change to the point where, you know, we don't have to do as much removal, but so far, I'm not sure. I did add the, in my book, there's a report, what we, what we get. It's basically a report on digital use of digital service, including Hoopla. And you'll see that the statistics, people are really using eBooks, they're really using audiobooks, video. Since we've had Hoopla videos increased like 124%. So, you know, during this time, it's been important that we are able to offer those services. I will say that freezing materials budget at this point in the year will reduce our contribution to digital content, and that's a contribution that we agreed to do by about $4,000. So it's definitely going to have an impact.
Evelyn?
Well, how much do you say would reduce?
About 4,000 is the way I think.
I thought, I remember asking this question, and I thought you said we had already met our obligation.
Parts to, there's two parts to that. There's a
Okay.
There's a basic part for um, reorders that we agreed to, and that's been paid. But the ongoing new materials has not been completed. So we're still going to be short.
Well, this is part of why I was saying before that within that $70,500 reduction between those four points, that there'd be some flexibility. If we save in A more than we thought, then we could use it in B, which is like materials. So if we save more in security than we thought we had, without, again, reducing security in any way, shape, or form going forward, that if we did that, we could put that monies into keeping up with our, our obligations to materials. It isn't just what we've decided to do.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, as we go forward, these things could change. Hopefully for the better. That's all I got, yeah.
I was gonna say, we're already a net borrower as it is versus being a net lender. There's a certain point at which, you know, I don't know what happens if we dip inappropriate point.
Is going to go way up.
What? I'm sorry?
Our net borrowing is going to go way up.
Yes, and, and where does that? The consequences of that in broader terms? But there are certain, I'm sorry.
Go ahead Evelyn.
Oh, just that there are certain things that in some ways, I use the word obligation with quotes around it because I can't think of quickly of another word. But there are commitments, maybe that's a better word, that we need to be keeping to um, you know, the, the entirety, not just us, but every, every other piece of upper without, of course, damaging our, our financial situation.
Well, and other libraries may be in a similar situation. One would think. Is that not the case?
Well, there are some differences out there with libraries. Although we're, we're, as a district library, we're in a sort of a unique position. As far as I know, we're the only district library that is not made whole. You know, and, and has, you know, gets less tax revenue than the people voted for. I, I'm not sure how this is going to work with other libraries who were supposed to be made whole if they don't collect those taxes. We don't know yet. And we don't know what effect that's going to have, but, but we're basically in a worse shape because of that situation, because, you know, the city's position is, again, they'll send us whatever taxes they collect.
I would think the, the libraries, though, that don't get tax revenue will be affected by reductions and, and from the sources of funding that they.
Well, again, it depends if it's a municipal library like the Hoes, they're closed and not open, and there has no employees left.
So they furlough people.
Right. But that's, that's a municipal library. On the other hand, Colony is a municipal library, and they're proceeding with reopening. So I, I, you know, yeah, it's all over the, all over the board out there. But I think, you know, if we're in a, in a worse position in terms of purchasing books and materials, you know, that's, that's definitely going to have an impact. People are going to know that. For example, new books that are, you know, people are interested in, well, when libraries buy new books, you know, they don't loan them right away. They loan them, their, their people go in line first, you know, for that, for that book. And so, you know, new books through us are going to be few and far between.
Any further discussion? Uh, any observations and, or community feedback that the board members have received?
Um, I, I just have one comment. I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Oh, sorry.
Just on the construction, um, I obviously have no idea how much it would cost. It just scares me to, to even think about even just the impact on the building itself to strip the, to have to get, do an abatement just sounds prohibitive off the top of my head, but there is, there's no other way to maintain safe, it, all of that lead and asbestos is in the paint and it's stable, right?
Um, on the back, on the east wall, it's stable. On the north wall, it's not.
Oh.
But I, I believe, and then I glanced at the report. My recollection is that the type of paint is at a different location on the north wall. I believe the type of paint in question on the north wall is at the parapets and is associated with roofing, I believe. Not an expert on this here, but um, I think it it's in a little bit different locations on the east wall and the north wall. So there, there may be some opportunities to be some selective approaches to the process. I believe that the architects are looking at that to see if there's a way to prioritize how that gets done.
That's great. Good.
I'm going to be calling Kirsten along.
Yes, we are lucky to have him.
Yeah, right.
I'm not an expert on asbestos, but I do know some people who have worked with it before, and then so I think we need to ask the questions of our architects so that they can. And thank you, Paul, for reaching out to Spectrum, and they may be able to advise us on how to move forward and prioritize what could be done, when, and for how much. So I think we need to get more information so that we can make a developed path forward.
Okay, I assume that we'll be discussing this more in the committee. Go ahead, Arlene.
I was just going to say, just that Kirsten, it's very valuable to have somebody around who knows what they don't know. I don't, I don't know what I don't know, so.
Anything else before we proceed?
We're on feedback, right?
Yes.
I'm going to, anyway, anticipation and communication, I get stopped and, and then asked, when is that library going to be reopened? And it's been a pleasure on my part to say, but it is, it is, and going through the details of when, where, and how. But also a little bit of, I'm trying to think again the right word, of a thought process of going, we're not getting that word out that we're open. But people are, are looking for, you know, we're asking, when, when, when? So at least they're waiting and they want that library to be open or be there.
Okay. Anything on your old new business? I will mention one thing. I just heard before the meeting that somebody had made a $5,000 donation to the library for children's programming. There is some good news. I want to put a I might have been on this. Yes, yes, that was very, very generous of the person.
Great.
So if there's nothing further, we'll move to Evelyn.
Do we want to go back? Because we pulled, I'm sorry Kirsten, we pulled the building report?
Oh, that's right. Yes, I have it down here. Thank you. I wouldn't have seen it until after I got to the, adjoining, adjourning the meeting. So, thank you. So Evelyn, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, please. Um, okay, I sent Kirsten, and I'm now looking at what I wrote, so. Not on our screen. Um, just three quick editorial things. That one, um, it's Upper Hudson Library System, not Upper Hudson Service Commission. These are the editorial ones. I suggested that fireman access may change to fire department or at least firefighter. And that downtown, because using Paul's terminology for those are two locations going consistently to call it Maine versus downtown. But that wasn't my, those are just the little details. There was one thing in their committee supports proceeding with current building work, east and north exterior walls, currently undesignated capital funds were set aside to meet the PPL share of long-term capital improvements and shall not be dispersed for other uses without prior review and approval by the commuter committee. And I, my comment was that it, it, again, it's, it's semantics, it's wording. To me, it made it sound that the committee had taken the power to um, close off any use of that money unless that particular, you know, the building committee reviewed and approved. But I think what the, what the committee actually talked about was no other projects would go forward besides the ones we were already in play without discussion and approval. And it's just the way it's, to me, the way it's worded, it sounds something other than what actually occurred. And since it's going to be a more formal document and part of, you know, our agenda and all, I, I thought it really needed to be fixed before our next meeting.
Evelyn, thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. I did get your email yesterday. I did read it yesterday. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to respond to your comments before our meeting today. So my apologies. With permission of the board, I'd like to take another shot at updating. I did share out the minutes to get some initial feedback, and some people felt that they were okay as they stood, but I think you've raised some good points. And I'd be happy to take a shot at updating the minutes to address some of the concerns you've raised and to find ways to be accurate as well as being correct, which are always the same thing. So I do want to accurately reflect the conversation, but I certainly don't want to change the relationship between the committees and the organization as, as a whole. So with permission of the committee, I have the board, excuse me, I would take these minutes back and revise them and send them out within 48 hours for review and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you Kirsten, and yeah, my apologies.
You, you raised some good points. No need to apologize. I'm sorry I was not able to respond more quickly to your email that you sent, so.
I just never know if Spectrum kept something back or really sent it out, so. I live in this email bizarro world.
Anything more before we move on? Okay, next is public comment. Does anyone have public, any public comment?
I do.
Freda?
Um, I have a question. Yeah, I'm wearing, I'm, I'm wearing the hat of the Friends of the Troy Public I'm wearing, I'm, I'm wearing the hat of the Friends of the Troy Public Library. We were very pleased that Lansingburg opened today. And to Evelyn's point about people knowing about it, I found out about it by going on the website. I sort of had expected that there might be an announcement on Facebook so that more people would know about it. I have a question about the budget and the ramifications for Lansingburg. So that in this phase of reopening, Lansingburg's hours are, are very constrained, you know, to two afternoons, two afternoons a week, and Saturday, as Paul said, I, I wrote down how many hours he said. Are the, is this a, is this a, represents the phase that the library is in, or is some of the constraints on Lansingburg's availability to the, to the public, part of how you all reach the 10% reduction in the budget? So can, is it anticipated that as the library as a whole goes through these different phases of opening, that Lansingburg will be restored to what it was before the virus? That's my question. I stumped the stars?
I'm, I'm waiting to see whether Paul's going to respond.
We're all waiting for Paul.
Opening Lansingburg, it, it's not sending that particular message, as far as I know. It's what we can do now with the staff that is split. It is, once you split the staff like that, there's, you find out how small your staff really is. Right now, it's all the hours that we could afford to do with that split staff, staff situation. Are you, if you're asking me if I know when this virus is gonna end, I don't know.
No, I'm not asking that. You know I'm not asking.
Are you asking me about going back to normal? Not even on my radar yet. We expect to be, I expect to be at age three, which is where we are now, for the foreseeable future, probably the rest of the year. But again, it depends on what happens out there. New York has been, you know, we, we attribute it to the fact that New York has been very good and followed the rules, and the cases have gone down, and the deaths have gone down, and that's great. Hopefully, that's the reason then we don't have another surge in, in the pandemic, but I don't know.
That's not my question, Paul. My question is about how resources are apportioned in Lansingburg.
Now, the resources we have are staff resources, and that's how it worked out. It wasn't a deliberate cause here of trying to save money. It was the fact that we don't have enough staff, you know, to open actually both locations with any more hours than we have right now.
It's, it's not based on the 10% reduction. It's based on, on the, the safety plan of, you know, having protecting the staff by only having half the staff working at any time. So if, if someone in one shift of staff gets the virus, it doesn't keep the entire staff from working and, and keeping the library open. So it's more the safety precautions that have been devised than an issue of the budget. Anything else?
One other, one other. What we, what the Friends are planning to do vis a vis the book seller is to come up with our own safety plan so that we can reopen. The plan now consists of creating a, a shield for the deaths so that the volunteers who work in the book seller are protected and restricting the number of people who can be in the book seller at a time because it is a small space. But all our volunteers have said that they are willing to come back and work at the book seller. It's significant because, as you know, our income comes from the sale of books. And so it's both the book seller and the ability to do pop-up sales in the community, and both, as you know, are constrained. But we are moving ahead with a plan to open the book seller once again, and my question is that when we come up with this plan, do we submit it to you, Paul, or?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, you need to go through me on that. We need to talk about, you know, what the plans are, you know, your timing and all that sort of thing. So, yeah, just get ahold of me, I mean, and, you know, we can, we can review all that.
I feel sometimes, you know, this has been our, our role in recent, in, in recent months, even before the virus, is don't forget Lansingburg. And, you know, because, you know, it has its own, you know, loyal followers in the Lansingburg community, and, you know, it's an important part of, of Lansingburg, and you know, we've been, you know, I, I've been in this community long enough to, you know, know that we've lo, closed branches of library, of the library. I used to go to Sickaway, and so I, you know, I feel every once in a while I have to say, don't forget Lansingburg.
Yeah. Thanks so much for all the Friends continue to do, even during this time. It's really inspiring, actually.
We had fun. We liked doing it. We're going to, we'll contribute to the adult reading program this year, which is gonna be a virtual program. We'll contribute to the children's summer reading program. And something else, I can't remember what else it is.
Shorts Out Loud?
Shorts Out Loud. We're paying for Shorts Out Loud, yes.
Yeah, great.
Yeah. And it's very interesting. One of the things I'm, I'll ask about it at another time is, you know, one of the programs we support is the museum passes, and whether or not, how that's gonna work out.
Well, I think right now, you're gonna, you're gonna see some savings there because
Right, I think so.
When they come up, and when they, when we're renewing, we're not really renewing now, you know, because many of them just are not open.
Right, right.
You might, you might be, you might have some savings there in the long run.
Yeah, so.
Well, the Clark and the Albany Institute both opened.
So did Mass Malka. Mass Malka just opened. And that's another one that we buy gases for, and, and the, the, the North Country one.
The Hyde?
No, no, the one, the, the one in the Adirondacks.
In the Tupper, Tupper Lake?
Yeah. Thank you for letting me sit in on these meetings, and
Thanks for being here.
Thank you for your work. I really appreciate it.
I appreciate the work you guys do. It's no, no fun having to deal with what you have to deal with.
Any other public comment? Well, I guess we're ready to adjourn. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Bob, do you second?
Yes.
Next meeting?
Yes, the, the next meeting is August 11th. So. Do we have a vote? All in favor of adjourning? Anyone against? Evelyn, are you against?
Now, why would you pick her?
She had her hand up. She had her hand up, so I didn't know whether it was in response to anyone against.
No, thank you, but that was a, aye.
Okay. Well, it was a pleasure to see you all. Thank you all for everything.
Hi, thanks for everything, Paul.